Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening. Welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Tuesday, October 17th. Welcome, everyone. We're going to slightly alter the agenda for the evening, and we are going to start with 81 Front Street. And we've received a letter this morning from Attorney Summers requesting a continuance until the Board's November 21 meeting, in order to allow time for the Board to conduct a site walk at a date and time of the Board's convenience on or before November 21. So, step number one is that I would appreciate a motion for continuance, please.
I'll move to continue the application of 81 Front Street based on the letter received in the office today by the applicant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded to approve, all those in favor of the motion to continue the application of 81 Front Street indicate by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, approved 5 to nothing. I want to make mention that, and I apologize, I haven't introduced the members of the Board yet, and I'm supposed to do that. So, let me just continue with this for a second. What I was hoping that we would be able to do, and I hope we have our calendars handy, is it would be very nice to be able to schedule the walkthrough of the property. I also want to mention that if more than three members of the Board are together in any one place, that constitutes a legal meeting. So, it is very, very important during the walkthrough that none of us talk amongst ourselves. If we happen to be there, we can't sit there and say, "Well, that's an interesting idea." Okay? And if any members of the public attempt to engage us in conversation, we just have to say, "I'm sorry, but this is a..." The law prohibits us from discussing this application with you. So, I just wanted, since we haven't had a walkthrough in years of a property, I can't remember the last one.
I can't either.
I literally can't remember the last time that we did it. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of the situation, that we can't... The five of us can go out for drinks afterwards, but we can't talk business, as an example, because that constitutes a legal meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Okay? So, I think it's important that we see the property. I think the applicant has requested it, and I think it's a really good idea to do so. And I think there's a lot to be learned. I just want to remind everyone of the need for omerto, as my Sicilian ancestors would have said. Yes? Thank you. Do you have suggestions as to dates, or are you open, is the applicant open to dates, Ms. Summers?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, first of all, thank you for... Is this thing working? I think it is.
It's not for here.
Okay.
I can see the green light, so you're good.
Okay. First of all, thank you for entertaining this idea. I do think it would be helpful for members of the Board and the public. I guess, I don't have anything in mind particular. I mean, one thing that might work is to simply do it on the night of the regular scheduled hearing, and perhaps do it, you know, maybe it's, say, at 6:30 or something like that. I have not, I mean, we're just tossing this out to the Board, so I don't have any particular instructions from my client as to dates or times that won't work. We will make it work. If this Board is amenable to the idea, we'll make it work in accordance with your schedule.
Thank you. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board is for Tuesday, November 21st, and if we were to do it on that evening, I would suggest doing it at 5:00, in order to give us time to do some walking, and then perhaps have even grab a bite to eat individually before the meeting. I wouldn't want to do it at 6:00. I think that's cutting it too close.
And it gets dark early, too, so I don't want it to be too dark when we're out there.
Is 5:00 even?
My preference would be to do it in the daylight.
Agreed. Is 5:00?
Yeah, it'll be past daylight savings time at that point.
It'll be dark.
Yeah, it will be dark. So, I think we need to potentially consider a weekend.
So, would people prefer earlier that day, say at 3:00, or would they prefer a different day?
Honestly, my preference is a different day.
Okay. Whatever day we do it, we're going to have to be at the same early time. And I don't think it's fair to ask the members of the Board to come out on a weekend. So, do you have a suggested date, Laura?
The 10th is Veterans Day. I don't know if people have that day off.
I do.
Unless there may be other obligations for that day. I don't want to interfere with that either.
I do. I do have plans that day.
Okay.
I mean, if I'm the only one that, you know, for doing it a different day, I can...
Does anyone else have an objection to doing it on the 21st? At 3:00 in the afternoon, so that we have at least an hour plus of daylight?
I can do, I'm local, so I can do that.
I can do my best to be there that early thing.
I know, it's getting out of work.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I work till 3:30 out of town, but I can finagle the boss.
Okay. Why don't we tentatively write down the 21st of November at 3:00 p.m. at the property at 81 Front Street for a walkthrough by the members of the Board, and abutters are welcome as well, or members of the public. We're not going to turn it into a free-for-all. I would hope that only interested parties would actually, of the members of the public, would show up. Are we good with that? Okay. So, we're going to do 11:21 at 3:00 p.m. Thank you all for your attention. Right. So, what I should have done at the beginning was introduce the members of the Board. To my far left, Martha Pennell, alternate member. Next to her, Laura Montagno, alternate member. To my immediate left, Esther Olson Murphy, clerk. To my right, hm?
Vice chair.
Oh, vice chair. I'm terribly sorry.
You wanted me to be vice chair.
I did. Goodness gracious.
She was clerk, I think. No, is it Teresa?
Teresa's clerk. To my immediate right, Joanne Petito, voting member. My name is Bob Fryer. I'm the chair.
I'm alternate.
You're an alternate?
Yeah. Alternate. Voting tonight.
One more error, and they're kicking me out.
We're off to a good start.
One more error, and they're kicking me out. With that, we're going to move on to the application.
Hold me one second.
I just have a question.
Ma'am.
On the walkthrough on the 21st, what about the members who are not here? What about the regular members?
I will make sure, I'm sure Barb will send out a notification of this, and if it doesn't meet with, if other people can't be there...
Then we...
Then...
The alternate.
Then we can consider either rescheduling it, or you all would hopefully be here on the 21st to vote.
Okay.
All right?
Fine.
Okay. Continuing on, the application of Douglas W. Johnson and Linda B. Comersey for a special exception for Article 4, Section 4.2 Schedule I, permitted uses, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing detached garage into a residential unit. The subject property is located at Number 10 Highland Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 65-142. This is ZBA Case 23-13. Is the applicant with us this evening, or a representative thereof?
Yes, let me hear.
Thank you. Please. I'll make note for whoever is speaking to speak up, please. Some of us are not, some of our hearing, the microphone is only for recording and for the TV, it's not for the room. So, and if anybody who's speaking would speak up, that would be awesome. Thank you very much. Introduce yourself, and let's get going.
My name is Douglas W. Johnson, and we are the current owners of Ten Highland.
Okay.
And I have submitted the request and application for the conversion of that, of the remaining barn. And unfortunately, my, the architect and I, Dave Gleason, is out with COVID, so...
Best that he not be here this evening.
Yeah, that was our decision today, that it would be best that he stayed at his house.
He's quite prudent. Do you want to tell us about the history of this project a little bit, please?
Yeah, the history of the project that we've been able to figure out was, that was, this is the original property that was up on the hill on Highland that dates back to 1899. So, we have what was the original 1899 farmhouse additions, and then this barn. And our overall plan is to renovate, convert the barn, and put a living unit in it, so my wife and I can move back to Exeter from Alaska. And then eventually...
You're not here just for us, the senior.
I am here just for you.
Wow. Did you take the red eye, too?
I have...
Sorry.
Without going into great detail, spent 24 hours flying on what should have been a 12-hour flight.
Oh, you're on the same flight.
Absolutely. I think we were on the same flight.
Well, it was a joy to take the red eye that extended for many more hours than I thought. So, our overall plan is to start with that original barn structure. We don't know what the original date of it was. We think it was from the 40s, but we have never found really good data.
This would be the shingle structure that's behind the house.
This is the shingle structure that's in very poor condition. And the idea is to convert and put in about 1,100, 1,200 square foot living area loft, and then keep it as a vehicle garage. And then the idea is we will rebuild that structure, and then renovate the original house structure, and bring it up to code, and enhance that property. And going into that part of the detail would be renovating the front of it, because it's just an asphalt slab right now.
But that has nothing to do with the...
Nothing to do with this. So, this is just the structure in the back.
Correct.
The design right now, we had some renderings that we've been playing with that I did supply in the application, but the idea is to keep it nominally to the height that it is current, and we will stay within the footprint of the existing foundation.
I know it was not you, but my impression from the packet is that essentially, this is the, this use was already granted to the previous owners who allowed it to expire?
Yeah, my, again, working with the Town Building Department, what we understand was the original applicant who owned the property, 2013-ish, had submitted and was granted an application for a permit to put four units in. Again, kind of based on the history, we think they were talking about demolishing both the barn and the original structure, but we can't verify. We think that's what they were doing. What they ended up by doing was converting the original farmhouse structure into a two-unit duplex, each floor being its, you know, the first and second floor being separate units. And then, we don't know what happened after that. They sold the...
So, there are two single-family homes in the back that were, that are new?
When they subdivided the property, again, what I'm recollecting, in 2013-ish, when they subdivided the property, the two units, the two houses in the back were subdivided off into roughly quarter-acre units, and then the remaining property we have is roughly a half acre in the front.
And that house that's in the front is two units right now?
It's currently two units, yes.
Okay. And you're just adding, you're taking the barn to add a third unit?
To add a third, and then coming back to the front unit, we're still trying to figure out if we're going to convert it back to a single family.
Got it.
Keep it as two. That, we haven't, we haven't ironed out yet. We're still in design. We're probably at 10% right now in concept. But, yeah, the property was approved for, and the two previous owners let the permit for four units lapse.
So, it was approved in March 2017?
Yeah.
Four units, and that included the two in the back and the two in the front? So, you're now, no, I know.
Yeah.
So, you're now essentially, since, so we can't go by this, because this would be for four units, and you're really looking for five on the...
No, three.
No.
It would be two in the back.
No.
Were included in the four?
The two in the back?
They don't own that property. Yeah, those are their own.
Yeah. The two units, the two houses behind to the north of Ten Highland were separate...
Before that.
I think so.
Houses, the single-family homes are totally separate from this whole case. There's no relevance, there's no connection.
So, the four that were approved in 2017 did not include the homes behind? It was strictly the...
Correct.
Thank you.
They subdivided, those have their own lots. This is on its own lot.
Thank you. I wasn't sure of the exact timing on when, because I remember that we did vote on that separation of that, of those lots as well.
Yeah, because of lack of frontage, correct.
Got it.
This is a request for basically continuing the four, potentially four units that was approved before.
Is that what we're doing, though? Are we extending that, or is this a new, it's a new special exception for three units?
It expired. It has to be a new application, but the fact is that we did discuss this, and we did approve it for four units in 2017.
Does that mean we have to, I guess this is probably more our discussion?
We, at most, it would go to three. At most, it's three.
I'm done.
Yeah.
Three units.
Yeah, we...
Two in the house and one in the...
That would, if we stay with what's current, it would be two in the house that is present now, and then one in the back, which is this, the barn.
Thank you for that clarification. Thanks, Doug. Appreciate it.
Now, you are requesting relief now, though, really, just for the barn?
Just for the barn.
Just for the barn.
Okay.
Yes.
To create one unit.
Right. One unit, approximately 1,200 square feet.
Clarification, you said earlier that you're not going to, planning on changing the footprint of that structure at all?
We are not.
Or increase you...
We are not increasing. We are staying within the, the barn is roughly 40 by 26. We are staying within that foundation.
Are you rate, but you're going higher?
We're potentially going, we think, around 28 feet.
Okay.
We think, we're still trying to work that out. The intent is not to make that, that structure overwhelm...
The house.
The, well, I'm going to go broader. We don't want it to overwhelm what's already there. We want that structure to be minimal height, because we know we've got the people on the north side, and we don't need it to be a monstrosity. Our idea is to try to shave that thing down as best we can.
So, on the front elevation of the house, and I'm assuming this is the, this is the barn?
Yeah. If we're looking at this one.
That's the main house. The barn's separate.
Okay. So, these elevations have nothing to do with the barn?
I have to see what picture.
This one.
That is the barn.
This is, this is the barn?
Yes. We're looking at this one.
Okay. So, the dotted line, the lower dotted line is the existing roof line, and then that where is it?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Um, I believe, no...
He's looking, he's looking at a different one.
Are you looking at...
Can I, am I allowed to walk over there?
Yep.
Yeah, of course. I'm looking at this one.
This is the existing house.
Okay. So, this is the garage that's associated with the house now?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's this one.
We're only looking at this drawing right here.
Got it.
Which one are you on?
Can you show us what that is?
Yes, that one. Okay.
This lower one.
That's what I assumed, yeah.
Yeah, the second drawing is the, is the, is the, is the main house.
Okay.
So, yeah, the, the, the structure is, on the conversion of the barn, we're trying to go with a minimal roof, queen post probably is the construction. So, we keep that pitch of the roof down to the, to the existing, you know, first level.
And there will be living space on both floors, then?
Loft in the west end, living space over what would be the garage.
So, the downstairs will be a garage on one part?
Uh, the, the east side of the garage would be, I'm sorry, the east side, first floor is garage. The west side first floor is living space.
Right.
And then that would be a vaulted ceiling up to the...
Loft above.
To the loft above.
Garage.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so there's no request in here having anything to do with setbacks, which are not changed. There's nothing in here about lot coverage, which is, which qualifies, so it's really just a matter of, as far as I'm concerned, the, the conversion of the existing unit into a resident, existing structure into a residential unit. Are there any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stick around.
I will sit my seat.
There you go. So, why don't we open this up to the public? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on behalf, or, again, the application? Hearing none, there's no need for you to rebut any comments in the public, since the public was mute on this subject. So, we'll close public session, move to deliberation. Seems pretty straightforward to me, especially given the approval that was given in 2017. Does anyone have any comments or questions? If not, we'll, I'll ask for a motion. Now, I'm hearing no questions from the Board. I think we're all pretty content, so would anyone like to make a motion?
Feel free.
I move that we approve the special exception submitted by the applicant, Douglas Johnson and Linda Comersey, for, the special exception for, per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, permitted use, and Article 5, Section 5.2, permitted, to permit the conversion of an existing detached garage into a residential unit.
So moved. Is there a second?
A second.
I'll say.
She's as jet-legged as you are.
Yeah. Sorry. I shouldn't be making motions. I wanted to know how good you were.
Same time, you were both in the same time zone, weren't you?
Yeah.
Until recently. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. You're approved 5-0. What time's your flight back?
7:00 a.m., sir.
crazier than me.
You better get a jump on it now.
Alaska Air?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Oh, boy.
I'm a Millennium Miler on this, dear one.
Well, thank you very much for joining us. You're welcome to stick around or leave. We need to stay tonight. Let's see. Let's see. Next on the agenda is the application of 107 Panama Road LLC for a special exception for Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing single-family residence and attached barn into three residential condominium units. Excuse me. The subject property is located at 50 Linden Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 82-11, and this is ZBA Case 23-15. Good evening, Ms. Summers.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Summers with John Hugh Tucker and Chindela. I'm here tonight for the applicant, Panama LLC. With me tonight also is Henry Boyd of Millennium Engineering, and Gal Perez, representing the applicant. As the Chair has indicated, the property is located at Linden Street, 50 Linden Street specifically, and the purpose of this application is to obtain a special exception in order to convert the existing single-family building and the existing barn into a three-unit structure, dwelling. And the barn will be renovated, but remain within the, the same, substantially the same footprint as it is currently located. I'm going to turn this over to Henry now to walk us through the proposal, and then I'll get up briefly to address, for the record, the points that have been raised in my narrative as to why we meet the special exception criteria, and we can answer any questions which the Board may have.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. For the record, I'm Henry Boyd with Millennium Engineering, and the plan set that you should have is made up of two sheets, the first sheet just being the recent conditions. The barn that Karen talked about was here, which is to be totally redone. Currently, the structure resides less than four feet from the rest of the property. So, the intent was to actually make that a better conforming situation, so that's going to be better than that stage. There are two existing driveways with curb cuts currently. A wall here, this topography challenges that we have, so I've chosen...
I'm sorry, what challenges?
Topography. So, I've chosen to show the topography on here, and it will tie into what we're doing in the back. There's a stone retaining wall. Currently, it's kind of a walkout situation down in the back, which is lower. On sheet two, the purpose here is to show the new...
Oh, you forgot to...
Oh, you forgot to.
What we're showing here is the actual driveway in the front. Will be a pervious paver driveway. We've chosen to add a detail to show what that substance would look like. We've also taken the existing paved driveway and cut it to here and providing parking. There will be two parking spaces in the front, which are pervious, as I said, and then there are four spaces in the back. One of the situations right now is everybody has to back out onto Linden Street, so at least this portion of the driveway, they'll be able to accommodate a turnout and then head out parking on it.
If I can interrupt you again, if you don't mind, we don't have the existing conditions mapped in our package. We only have two copies of the, of the proposed. And so, I'm, I, I was flipping papers. You're proposing eliminating the curb cut on the left-hand side?
We, we are not, sir. Both of them will be maintained.
Oh, you're gonna continue to both?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure why they don't have the existing...
Yeah, I think we each have two copies of the proposed.
Yeah. I have the same.
Yeah. We all have two copies of the proposed exhibit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, let me, um, let me go back just to show you then, because I think it's hugely important, is you can see the, the existing structure here is very close to that, that westerly line.
Yep.
In fact, it's less than four feet from, from that property line. And you can see the two existing driveways as well with the curb cut.
Ah, so you're gonna shorten the building in order to get by it?
We're gonna, no, we're gonna shorten that building simply to make it more conforming, because right now, currently, it's just too close to the property line. The, about a half of that structure is, is over the building envelope line.
Mm-hmm.
So, we thought that we would pull it back, and we challenged the applicant to look at it, and he's allowed us to pull it back by essentially five feet. So, that's shortened by five feet. This will be two stories, so one of the things that we had to do was to design a deck so that it would comply and meet the building setback, so that there isn't any requests that we need for, um, building setback relief. We're improving this setback, so, as Attorney Summers has told me, that this is simply a, a special use and not a variance. So, as I had spoken about the, the grading in the back, the plan is to, to actually build a new retaining wall here and then leave the natural grade in the back. So, this will all remain natural. This will be pervious pavers here, so we actually are experiencing not much, but a reduction in the, the sealed surface. So, we're going from an open space of 71.6% to 71.8. So, it's not a huge difference, but it is a difference. And there, again, on the, the actual building, the building is, is going to be smaller, as I was demonstrated by essentially taking that 38.5-foot depth of the building and cutting about five feet off of it. So, the building itself will be, be smaller as well. So, that's it in a nutshell. Certainly happy to answer questions, but may turn it over to Sharon.
So, there are no other changes planned to the footprint of the buildings themselves?
The, the front building, um, or the building, the dwelling itself will stay the same. I'm sure there's gonna be some interior changes, but nothing on the exterior. And then this will be essentially all new construction, just in a, a box to fit into this, this little corner here.
Okay. And the entrance for two of the unit, one of the units will be off of the, uh, as you look at the property, the right-hand side, and the other two will be off of the entry on the left-hand side?
So...
As you look from Linden Street?
Um, the front building, which is essentially that, one of the units, they have multiple access points. There's a door here, a door here. There's also a deck for them to get out here. There's also a deck in the back that they can get out, so there's multiple access points for, for the, this unit. The other two units will be housed within the new barn, what was the barn structure?
Oh, interesting. The house is only gonna be one unit?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this will essentially be stacked, and they'll both enter through here with a divided entry in, in that building.
Are there any questions from other members of the board?
Is this on town sewer?
That's a good question, Martha. At this point, it is not, but there is, in negotiations right now with the Y, there's an existing sewer manhole here. As I understand it, the abutto to, to the east is already tied in, and the plan and the negotiations, which we've learned so far, is that, that there would be a new sewer pipe out of the back of this that would tie in, and also the neighbor to the west will tie into what will be our pipe, and both will discharge into the existing manhole that's here.
So, there are three houses in a row there, and only one of them is currently on sewer?
Uh, that's what I believe, yes.
And town water?
Town water, I believe they have, yes, they have town water already.
Okay.
The front unit that is directly on Linden Street, is that going to be on town sewer?
All three units, ma'am, will be plumbed into the sewer.
The sewer, the manhole isn't in the back?
It's, it's on the Y, the property for the YMCA.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, there's an existing manhole there, so we're in negotiations to secure that easement. If we're approved here, we have to do some survey work to make sure that we can design the, the, the sewer lateral to get into it, as well as for the people next door.
My understanding is that when sewer was put in, it didn't go past Talbot Gym, and they had to put an extra line behind for the Y, which is why you're tying in, there's nothing in the street.
Right. And it, that'll be a good, good idea to get, get everything tied in. We're, we're not too far from the river, so...
No. That's quite wet.
Yeah.
Quite wet behind there.
So, the upshot will be that they all will be town, be tied into town sewer?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That, is that a given, or is that still in discussion?
Sharon probably can speak more on that. Were there any other questions for me?
I actually had, I do, too. You can go first before you fall asleep.
Why don't we finish with, do you wanna finish with?
Sure. I was just gonna try to respond to that.
Oh, go ahead.
One discreet question, and...
That was not working.
Oh, okay. And, and then I'll, then I'll turn it back to Henry. On the, the sewer issue, what I would say is a couple of things. One is, because this is going to have three units in it, we will need to go to site review. We'll need to go to the planning board. And so, obviously, the planning board and TAC and so forth are going to, to look at carefully the design and so forth. So, right now, it's, it's a little premature to, to talk about this, but what I can say is that this is part of our overall scheme, and certainly, we understand, and I think I made reference in it in my materials, if the board wishes to make a, as a condition of approval, that we would have the, the town sewer, then, then that's fine.
Okay. So, right now, it's like that, the existing house is on a septic?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then I have one more question, and then I'll turn it over.
Okay. Do you want me to?
It was just more, so, um, the two units are in the new building. Each of those units are two-bedroom?
Um, I think that's what we said. I don't have my paperwork right in front of me.
Three to four.
Well, three to four bedrooms in each unit?
I think...
That's how I read it.
Three to four per unit, that's what we had originally.
How, how is that possible? Well, the drawing show, two-bedroom.
It's possible, here, just... Let me, um, I, I have to, this may be a...
The narrative might have been incorrect.
This plan, this proposal has evolved on several occasions, so it's entirely possible, and this, this is probably my fault, that when I said three to four bedrooms, that was an earlier, in the narrative, that was an earlier iteration. So, you should go with what, what's shown on, on the floor plans, which appears to be just two bedrooms.
I was shocked about that many bedrooms.
I was too.
Those are big rentals.
The application as presented to us has two in each. That's what we will vote on.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's an upper bound? That's a hard upper bound?
Yes.
And that, 'cause that affects parking and everything else? Okay.
Yeah, so that might, could lead way.
Good.
Parking. You have six parking spaces there, does, but each unit needs two?
That's correct.
So, where's the guest parking?
I'm not sure. I didn't think it required one at, at three units.
Guest parking for multifamily based on the total number of units. One additional space for guest parking for each four units, so you need one more parking space.
For how many units?
For four. For up to four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you need one additional spot.
We don't show one, but we could accommodate here, and that also would have to be done in pervious pavement, or pervious pavers.
Okay.
So, we could accommodate certain...
So, the front unit, the house, is only gonna have two bedrooms as well?
That's correct.
No, it's three, it's three to four.
Yeah.
That's not part of the...
I don't know much about inside of the building.
The existing one, I thought, said had four bedrooms.
Yes.
Unless, yeah.
But from a parking perspective, it's two each for each multifamily unit of two plus bedrooms.
Okay.
Regardless of whether it's three or four, it's still two parking spaces, which is a total of six plus one.
Plus one is seven. Okay. So, you do have to provide seven parking spaces?
Yeah, and we can, we can do that, sir.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody?
Oh, she hasn't presented yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's answering my question.
Okay, that's three, that's three mistakes for the evening. I'm out. She's in charge.
Nope.
I was the one.
I'll be brief. I simply want to point out a couple of the, the key elements of the, of the narrative here, um, I, 'cause I think Henry did a, you know, as usual, a great job just kinda walking through the presentation. So, um, a couple of, some, some numbers just to throw at you. First of all, the property is located on a 0.35 acres. The single-family contains 2,433 square feet. It has four bedrooms. It was built in 1840 and has been used as a residence really since that time. In terms of the criteria, the first criteria is that the use is a permitted special exception, and that is the case here. The second criteria is that the use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so as to protect the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience. As we said, we intend to demolish the attached barn, construct within substantially the same footprint. We're going to increase the conformity of the property by, by pulling the, um, the size of the barn back, so we're gonna make that setback more conforming. There is adequate space to accommodate the two dwelling units that will be in the new barn. As we've talked about tonight, the property is currently on, on municipal water, and we intend to extend municipal property, sewer to the property, and also to enable the, um, the property to the west of ours to hook in to the municipal sewer as well, which is going to have public health benefits. And as we've just been discussing, there is adequate space on site for, um, the vehicles for the units and also for one guest park, parking. The next criteria is that the proposed use is compatible with the zone district and the adjoining post-1972 development, where it's gonna be located. The property is zoned for residential use and for, as a single-family use, and this use by special exception. Within that particular area, we also have, in addition to single-family homes, we have the Seacoast Y and the cemetery across the street. The proposed, uh, use of this is going to remain residential in character and therefore is compatible. The next criteria is adequate landscaping. What I would say to that is that, again, this is, this is a topic that will be addressed once this goes to site review, but in the meantime, what I would say is that on the westerly side of the property, we have had discussions with that property owner as to the kind of screening or landscaping that they might like to see, and we would represent that that will be ultimately worked out to, you know, by mutual agreement. And then on the easterly side of the property, there is a fence acting as a screen between our property and the, the abutting property.
Is that fence owned by your property?
No, that's the abutting property owner that owns that. Adequate off-street parking is provided. We've talked about that a little bit. The use conforms, the next criteria is the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district. And again, it, it does, and not only that, but we're taking the non-conformity as to the setback and making that a little bit more conforming. We understand that this is gonna be going to site review. It's not going to adversely affect the nearby or, or abutting properties. No hazardous materials. These non-applicable tax maps are, that's gone. And then as for the criteria having to do specifically with conversions, we've touched upon those already, having to do with off-street parking. And then also in, on page four of the, the narrative, we talk a little bit about the fact that the minimum lot size is going to be 30% of the minimum lot size. And so, what we computed was that the minimum lot size for each unit is going to have to be 4,500 square feet. The lot size itself is 15,000, um, so, so we meet this, this, this standard. And obviously, the structure has been a residence for 10 years. The last criteria is that, well, actually, not the last, there's a couple more after that, in relative to open space. Because this is contemplated to have a municipal sewer, we've calculated the open space at 40% and, and taking that percentage and comparing, comparing it to the square feet of 15,246, that comes up with 6,009, 6,099 square feet of open space. So, we meet that criteria because we have 11,621 square feet of the property as open space. So, we, we actually exceed the minimum. We intend to have this conversion, once it's done, form a condominium, so, um, these will not be rental units, they will be sold. Site review is already happening. We are not asking for an expansion of the existing structure, and this is going to be municipal sewer, so there's no need to get into adequate septic facilities, and I think that covers all of the criteria. I'm happy to answer any questions which the board may have on the, our meeting the criteria.
I just wanted to clarify, if I may. The application, excuse me, says six parking spaces, and it's acceptable to you if any condition of approval states that it must be seven?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Any questions for the applicant?
And just to clarify, the new footprint's actually smaller than the current.
That's correct.
And I said they're moving it back five foot from...
I had worries before when I first read it, so now my worries have been abated.
Yeah, we are.
And I think we already went over the bedrooms in the new units. It's two bedrooms per unit.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I will then now open it up to the public. If anyone would like to address the board, please step up, introduce yourself.
Get this adjusted for my height.
Is that the good mic that went in there?
That's the new one.
That's the new one, thanks.
I think so. Hi.
Hello.
I'm Teresa Page. I think I'm familiar to most of you. To start out, for the record, I am a member of this board, um, and also the clerk, and so I've recused myself from voting on or this application or participating in tonight's meeting, partially due to scheduling conflicts, so I'm gonna be here for as long as I can. I'm here with my husband, Luke Elsasser. I'm going to spell his name, and he's going to tell me if I miss the first S. It's Lucas, L-U-C-A-S, and his last name is Elsasser, E-L-S-A-S-S-E-R. Didn't change my last name for a reason.
Okay, no marital discussions, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. His face will show if I say something offensive to him. So thank you for everyone for being here, because I know it's not always easy with scheduling in October. It seems to be a powerful month for work obligations and such, so it's appreciated. This has been a long time coming for us to be here discussing this application. Just to give a little bit of background, we purchased our home on Linden Street at 46 last July, so July 2022, and we've been there for a year and a handful of months. It's important to us to be in Exeter. We love it here. And being next to the home, I think it was sold a handful of months before we purchased our home, so maybe April. And at that time, it was pretty much sitting vacant. We expected it to be a residential use, and frankly, we do think that it's a larger home. It does lend itself to being a multi-unit that's in line with the needs of the town. We know what it takes to get into a home here, so we're not opposed to the general idea. Over the last year, we've seen a handful of iterations of the property, so starting out with vacancy. Shortly after that, it turned into an Airbnb or short-term rental, so marketed up to 12 individuals plus cars and pets. So that situation was challenging. It's given us a preview of what this property looks like, not only to us as a Butters, but to the small three-house neighborhood that we are. Following that iteration, it was a boarding house for a dozen or so workers rotating in and out, coming in in the evening, leaving in the morning, and that also presented us with a preview of just what it's like to have an increased number of cars and traffic. And it impacted us quite a bit. This village over was difficult to manage. When we moved in initially, we had no plans of adding fencing. It wasn't really necessary. There's some vegetation there, like temporary-type fencing, but it became a situation where we would have loved to be here talking about appropriate screening for us for this to change in any way from a single-family to a multi-use, but we did do that at our expense and out of necessity. And so I know that the other side is still up in question. Our neighbor Lorraine is extremely ill today, and I know that she wanted to be here and isn't, but that's a consideration that it still remains to be decided, and so I just point that out. The other important feature of our neighborhood, the three houses that it is, it is located next to the Y, and then on the other side, we have the Seacoast School, and then the lower schools that are attached to that behind, we have the parking lot. So it does present kind of a unique traffic pattern where it's busier than I would have expected. So we have kids walking on their own across, you know, our neighborhood between the Y and the school, and then we have the buses coming from the other side. And as soon as we moved in, we heard from the school that it's trafficky. There's been a couple close calls, and so we've cut back our hedges and dealt with that situation. With the increased use next door, the traffic has been comical at times, driving across sidewalks and things like that, and so I know having a turnaround will help with some of that, but it's also, if we're adding more cars and people, it's challenging to think about what that could mean from a sound perspective, a traffic perspective. And so as we move forward, I know Luke's going to cover some specific questions about the application, but it'd be important to us that this goes to planning board review. This board does have the option of deferring its approval until the planning board has had a chance to review it. I just ask that the board keep that in mind. It would be a comfort to us, I think, just to have a plan and to know that the traffic around the entire area has been considered. If it's going to be condos sold separately, we would like that to be a condition, and to note that if those don't sell immediately, that it doesn't change what the permissible use is. And the sewer too, that, you know, we would ask that the sewer be a requirement, or that we're back here talking about what the space looks like if it does have to be on septic. So I think I've covered most.
If you don't mind if I ask a couple of questions.
Sure, yeah.
Is your home currently on sewer?
It is.
So you're the one that's on sewer. It's the one that's further out than you that's not on sewer.
Yes.
You're the in, toward town, end of the three.
The left right side.
Looking, yes, when you have Linden Street to your back. What is the current use of the property?
It's currently rented. It's a couple and a handful of dogs, and it's been lovely. I don't remember how long it's been. Yeah, end of summer, so I'm not sure it's necessarily a long-term rental, but it's residential, single-family usage right now.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
You want to? A couple here?
Hi, I'm Lucas Elsasser. She spelled my name earlier. I just had a couple of specific things that I wanted to go over in the application. Some of it's just some wording and some are some actual numbers pertaining to the square footage. I think in the application, it stated that moving from one unit to three units would be a slight intensification. That was the phrase used, and I think we think that's a bit of a mischaracterization because it's actually, I know that they're now talking about the two units just having two bedrooms, but in the application originally, it was three to four bedrooms, so we didn't consider that to be a slight intensification. We thought it'd be like a tripling of intensification. Basically, if you have a four-bedroom house and then you add two, three-to-four-bedroom homes, you're going from four to five people to maybe 12 to 15 people. So to hear that it's only going to be two bedrooms per additional unit, that's a little bit more comforting, but still, we're talking about, you know, possibly, you know, eight to 10 or 12 people on that property, and then also two cars to possibly seven cars. So I don't think that's slight at all. I think it's actually quite considerable. And then the other thing is regarding some of the square footage listed in the application, it's at some point in the application, it states that the lot size is 15,246 square feet, and these are maybe some things that the applicant can speak to. But in the actual site plan, it states that the square footage is 14,594 square feet, which is a discrepancy of around 652 square feet. And then also, the impervious surface, which is the structure, the existing structure and the small paved area on the one driveway, is 3,625 square feet. But then in the site plan, it states that it's 4,139 square feet, which is an increase of about 500-plus square feet. So it's actually kind of shifted around about 1,100 square feet, opposite of what the application says compared to what the site plan says. So I'm just not sure what the discrepancies are there. You know, it could be something simple that I just am not aware of. And then I see that the, so then the proposed impervious surface is slightly smaller, and they explain that. I want to know, is the setback requirement, is there a specific setback requirement with, like, new construction? Because in one point in the application, I think it said 10 feet, but then in this site plan, it says 15 feet? So I'm just curious as to what really is the, if there is a rule pertaining to that.
This is not a dialogue.
Got it.
It's a presentation. I'm going to defer on answering.
Gotcha. So here, it says it's roughly nine feet on the site plan, but I'm just, I'd like some clarification on that if anyone has it.
Which setback are you referring to specifically?
Between 50 Linden Street and 52 Linden Street.
So not on your side?
Not on our side, on the side that our other neighbor who couldn't be here. So that's one area of question. And then I realize in this proposed impervious surface of 4,117 square feet, it's slightly smaller. I'm not sure if that takes into consideration the decks, if that takes into consideration that large two-story deck that they plan to add on the back of the new structure. And it definitely doesn't take into account the new driveways that they're planning to put in, which they explain is a pervious surface, which they have a little drawing here and a description as to what that is.
So assuming that's pavers of some sort.
Yeah, pavers. And so the idea that the water can ingress through the joints in the pavers, and it's not an impervious surface. And I was just wondering, have, has the, a question that possibly the board could answer is, has the board considered a condition like this? Where I don't know the overall square footage of the impervious surface and the pavers, but it could, because there's not enough dimensions on the site plan, but it could be that that exceeds that 60-40 ratio between impervious surface and unused or an open space. So I assume the pervious pavers are being used so that they're not, that they are in accordance with the criteria of the 60-40 split. But I'm also wondering if, even though the pavers are not technically an impervious surface, are they, would they be considered open space? Is that's, because that seems a bit, I don't know, maybe not quite in spirit of the rule or, you know, the ruling, but that's just an opinion, I guess, I have. But overall, that being said, they, in order to do that, they'll have to take down a lot of greenery, yard, they'll have to take down, I believe there's two mature trees in that area that I'm sure they'll have to take down. And then it's also just, it's basically, and then adding that deck on the backside is just, I think it's quite dramatically changing the character of the property. And that's just something that we've discussed, that, you know, it is, it may not affect our property values, but it does affect the character of that property substantially, we believe, because that is a lot of, that is a lot of space that's being changed. It's not just that barn being taken down and then replaced with a structure. And a new structure will also be taller than the barn, because currently, the barn is not as tall as the existing home up front, but the new drawings show that the barn will meet, it looks like match, the height of the house up front. So that structure will be larger, and there will be much less green space, and I'm considering open space. And that two-story deck is pretty tall and will obviously, you know, provide, you know, less privacy for us and for the neighbor at 52 Linden Street. So, yeah, that's kind of what we have to say. Do you have anything else?
I just have one comment about the use of the pavers. It's that it covers more area than is needed to turn around, and it comes right up to the fence on our side. And so some of the issues we've had are like headlights or getting right up against that. And right now, there's a pretty decent buffer, same as, it's not nearly what we have on the side with the school, but I'm worried that it's going to encourage parking along the side of the fence rather than in those designated parking spaces. And if that can remain green space, that kind of prevents the problem in and of itself of having vehicles kind of right up against the side.
Do you mind? Can you put up the drawing and can you just explain what you're talking about? Because I'm having a hard time visualizing what you're suggesting.
Yeah. Luke, do you want to?
Like where you're talking?
Take the microphone.
Just take the microphone with you.
So our property is along this side, so this existing dwelling is, looks like a pinch of our house. And then our existing fence, new fence, is right along here, and there's really not much space between. So if I'm looking at what it takes for a car to turn around here, it doesn't seem like we need to turn this into pavers, that this could still be green space, which would prevent some of the concerns we have about traffic coming right up against the property.
You also voiced a concern about parking along the driveway. It appears that the width of that would not be appropriate for parking.
I think it's worth to park up on the grass, like off the pavers too. I don't know if that, it'd be tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's tight. We actually have moved our bedroom from this side of the house to this side, just because it's a lot with traffic lights and sound, and I'm assuming that once people can turn around here, there'll be less beeping, but it's a consideration for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can put it back without turning it off.
Would any other members of the public like to address the board? May I ask you a question, sir?
Yes, sir. Oh, I don't have to get up.
You have a microphone right there where you are.
Can you hear me now?
The Butters described the several iterations of the property prior to the current use. Are those legal uses? As an Airbnb or as a boarding house with 12 people living in it? Were either of those?
No.
Were you required to take action?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
And the owner acquiesced and moved the Butters out. I don't remember when that was. I believe July. I gave them a deadline to move.
Okay.
And they did. And now the house is being rented as a single-family home.
Okay.
So there are no violations at this point.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would you like to comment?
Yeah, you go ahead.
There are several questions that were raised that I think you, either one of you can address, but I think Henry, you should.
Yeah, I think probably the most important one is the parking. These pavers are really expensive, and they do work, obviously, as pervious and help with groundwater recharge and those things. The reason that this is so large is that it can accommodate the standard parking space that's required by Exeter, and also a backing area so that they don't have to back all the way out into the street. It is tight as it comes down, but I don't think that there's enough room with the Butters' fence, with the edge of the paver, for somebody to get off of the edge and to park over here. And I don't really see why they would need to. We will be adding another space in here.
I'm sorry, where?
In here for the guest spot, that we'd need to, so that they could back out here. So it'll probably come in perpendicular like this. But the issue, I don't think that we can eliminate the width of this because that depth is required to be able to back out as if you were in a parking space, so that you could back up and then be able to negotiate your turnout. The only other thing that we really could do, we could eliminate some of these spaces, the pavers, by using a product called GrassPave, which is actually, it looks like grass. You grow grass on it, and you could actually travel with a fire truck over top of it. So to have some of that green effect back in there, we could do that, but I would not recommend it on the driveway, but maybe the portion of the pavers themselves so that there isn't that much turning on it, because if you have a whole lot of turning on those, it will, the grass just won't grow, and they can shift. But that is something that we could implement here possibly and eliminate some of what will be hardscape, but pervious hardscape. The deck, we've tried to kind of tuck it in here, so it is, I don't live there, so I can't appreciate, you know, what they're saying, but it is tucked behind the structure substantially, so you'd kind of have to come down here all the way to be able to see that deck. You'd have to be way out here to see it.
Or be in a butter.
Yes, but even then, Mr. Chairman, you'd have to be, your angle to see it, you'd have to be at least here before you could see around the corner of the structure to see it. So we are working, as Sharon told you, to work with the Butters, at least on this side, to be able to see what there should be for screening, and hopefully, we can work that out. And I don't remember if there was something else.
There was a discrepancy as far, there were several discrepancies pointed out. I also want to point out that we did not get a site plan, a tax map, so it's hard to see, and your packet does not include, something that shows the location of the abutting homes, so we can't tell whether, where they exactly sit.
So I can't speak on why those numbers in that application are different. I can tell you that these are accurate survey numbers, and I can only glean that maybe it was taken from some of the town information. I'll let Sharon speak to that.
Oh, sure. Blame the town.
I didn't put that package together. We do show the Butters' homes, the Director Butters' homes for each of the lots. The Y is in the back, and the cemetery is across the street, so we do show where the homes are on the lot.
But we don't have that map.
I understand. It is, they are shown also on the plan that you have.
It's not the whole house. It's like the front corner. We can't see the house could.
I get it. It should have had a tax map as well.
Yeah, because that would show exactly the location of all of the.
Yeah, because, I mean, traditionally, we're not going to invade private property to shoot the entire house on it, but if you have it on the tax map, you could have seen it. You're right.
Mr. Chair, one thing I can do for you. This is the original application from 2022. And I apologize for having to kind of pass this around, but this will have, and I, I don't know why we didn't have the tax map in the, in the one that we just resubmitted. But this should be in here. Aha. There we go. I've got a couple that I can pass around.
So basically, all three of the, of the homes are located toward the front of their lot, respective lots. And so the deck does extend significantly toward the rear. Can I pass this down?
Yes.
Share that.
Here's another. Is it tucked up there?
Um, I think, if you can just share that with Martha. Thank you. It's just important for us to be able to understand how the abutting properties are cited.
Sure. We're talking about this house.
This is the house, right? This is, this is the abutters. And then this is the neighbor. Definitely a question about-
Do you-
I don't know if other members of the public want to speak. Should I wait?
No, I've already asked if there are other members of the public, so it's up to you for rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, so first, I do want to acknowledge the fact that when the, in the early days of the ownership of this property, we did in fact run into some difficulties with zoning violations, which I worked closely with Doug on to, to try to get that rectified. But I think the important thing for this board to know is that all of that is now history. It's, it's the, the property is being properly used, there are no zoning violations. And so I think that this board can, can move forward and do what you're supposed to be doing. We should decide tonight on the, whether or not we meet the criteria. As to some of the issues that were brought up, I think, I, I would point to a, a number of these things that are going to come up in the context of, of site review. As, as this board knows, traffic is not really the purview of this board. And it will be studied extensively in the, in the site review. I think that the same thing is true. Henry's just explained, I think, a little bit, the notions about the amount of open space, the presence of the, the pavers or lack thereof, the removal of the, the decks and the trees. I think to some extent, a lot of those kinds of things are going to be taken care of with the planning board. As to the other, the merits of some of the other concerns expressed, the presence of the deck, the removal of trees, well, I can certainly empathize with the desire, as in a butter, not to see things changed. I would also say that if this property were to remain as a single-family home, and the current property owner simply decided to renovate the barn into a, more bedrooms, and put a deck on the back of, of the, of the barn, they could do that as a matter of right. They could simply get a, a building permit for that. So I think that some, well, I appreciate some of the concerns that are going to be raised. It is possible that, say, for example, if the barn were to be renovated, four bedrooms were to be put in there as a matter of right, as a single-family home. You would still have an addition of cars, of, of, most likely, on that property, coming and going. Similarly, if the single, if the property owner wanted to put a deck on the back, they would be able to do that, so long as they complied with the, the zoning requirements. So I think that, again, while I appreciate the, the desire on the part of any abutter not to see change, I don't know that that's a basis for this board to find that the special exception criteria are, are not met. I think that the amount of, of work that we are proposing to do, the fact that the, the existing non-conformity as to the setback on the westerly side of the property is in fact being improved upon, is a plus. And I think that the, the fact that the exterior of the, the main building is not going to be altered in any way, shape or form, goes a long way to try to maintain the essential character of the property within that, that sort of three building or three-house neighborhood, and as well as the properties across the street. So in short, I, what I would say is that while I, I appreciate the, the concerns expressed, I think that those are readily dealt with in the context of the planning board. And I also think that some of the concerns that are expressed could very well be experienced if this were simply a single-family home with extensive renovations made on it. So happy to answer any questions which the board may have. And otherwise, I think that's it.
Any further questions for the applicant before we close public session?
There were some discrepancies with the square footage. I don't know that it would make a difference in the calculations.
I, I would say to that, and I can't quite explain why those, those discrepancies exist as between the narrative and the, what's on the site plan. What I will say, though, however, is that we, even, even with the discrepancies, we exceed the minimum requirements for open space and the like. So I, I don't know that it's all that significant.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, we'll close public session, move to deliberations. Well, this is one where I think we're going to have to go through the criteria pretty clear, pretty carefully. So if somebody would like to perhaps start the conversation in that direction, I would appreciate it.
I'll go through it. The special exception criteria.
Special exception criteria plus the special conversion set.
Are we going to do each request separately? Because there's two articles, so are we going to, are we going to combine each criteria? Because it's two, right? It's four, we're doing five dot-
Oh, because of five.
There's five dot two, and then-
I think we should, well, we do the five, and then you do the additional eight for the conversion.
Okay.
I think it's eight for the conversion, whatever it is, eight to eight, something like that. Yep.
Okay, so which ones do you want to do first?
General special exception criteria, please.
Okay. That the, a use, okay. For special exception criteria, that the use is a permitted special exception is set forth in Article 4.2, Schedule 1.
It is.
It is, okay. That the use is so designed, located, and proposed to be operated that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected. It appears to be. Does anybody have any comment on that? I guess there's a concern with-
I actually have a-
Traffic.
I have a concern, but it may not be this board's purview. There's no, to me, any space for saving snow. Flowing, if you have to plow the thing. I have plowed myself, uh, shoveled myself driveways, and I don't, wouldn't want someone to have to shovel by hand. But where are you going to put the snow? And if you have the snow in there, then the parking places disappear, and they, they move out onto the street or wherever you do. And having lived in an apartment building or tight quarters where several parking spaces were consumed by snow piles, you ended up having to scoot around a parking space. Now, whether this is-
I share your concern. I think that's something that is, is technical review more than anything else, the-
Okay.
Site plan. I mean, I don't, I don't believe that's a, a stated concern in the zoning ordinances.
Well, that's-
I, I share your concern, but I don't believe it's something that we-
That's why I brought-
Yeah.
I had a, kind of question about the, the set, the footprint and the ex, even though they're, they're coming away, they're making one side more wider.
Less, less of an incursion.
Less, right? There's a deck that's added on to the back. Does that also not get counted as part of the buildable footprint? It does not?
It's within the foot, it's within the required footprint.
So it's just the structure, the, so from a setback perspective?
The deck would have to meet the setbacks.
Okay.
It looks like it does on the plan.
But it's not, well, it looks like it does, but it's not measured on the plan.
True.
So, I mean, I guess I would ask-
But you can see where this dotted line, that's the setback. So it's right up against it there, then it has whatever that-
That's what that-
Since it's not articulated in the application, it must meet the setbacks. If it does not, they would not get a building permit for it.
Okay. So that was one thing. And then the other thing I think we need to make sure that we're considering is the, making sure that it gets over to municipal water and sewer.
I think there are multiple, I've got a list of at least three conditions that I, I would like to see attached to any approval, should one be
Okay.
Considered.
Okay.
And yes,
So I think that-
It absolutely has to be on water and sewer. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the fact that they're tearing down the barn completely and rebuilding, they still, does that change the fact they're not in the setback? It's more they're increasing the distance from that fence, but they're not renovating the barn. They are tearing it down and rebuilding it. That's now a new structure.
They are allowed to build a new structure on the existing footprint. They're offering to build a new structure on less than the existing footprint.
That's one.
So there's an, I understand the statement about the height perhaps being an issue, but I don't believe that there is an issue as far as the-
That setback.
Yeah, the setback is concerned. Because they could, they could tear it down and rebuild-
Build it where it is.
Same footprint.
Okay. It's a little hard since we didn't get that one, the existing, that's a little-
I know. The packet is deficient in a few ways.
Anything, okay. Shall I continue? Did we address, should, do we need to have discussion on this before going through the criteria?
I think each one of the criteria, we just have the discussion. And I think that what we've articulated here is that, is that there are some concerns that can be addressed through
Okay.
Conditions.
Okay. So we're up to C, that was-
B.
That was B?
Yep.
Okay, so we're up to C.
Yep.
That the proposed use will be compatible with the zone district and adjoining post-1972 development where it is to be located, adjoining principal uses prior, in existence prior to 1972, that are not permitted uses as listed in Schedule 4.2, Schedule 1. Permitted use shall not be considered in determining the compatibility of an applicant's proposed use.
It is residential.
Yes.
It's multifamily, but it is residential.
Yeah. So it's, it seems to be compatible with the zone district.
Yeah.
Okay.
D, David.
Anything else? That adequate landscaping and screening are provided as required herein. We haven't really heard about screening or landscaping, I don't believe.
Well, they talked about the wester, the westerly side, but I don't think that it's fully-
Yeah, and it was, they've talked about it and come up with some ideas, but not sure it's-
Right. And I don't think the easterly side has been, isn't referenced here at all.
So the application does state that intends to provide landscaping on the westerly side of the property as mutually agreed between the applicant and the owner of 52 Linden Street. Again, one can infer that if there is no mutual agreement, then this application would be not valid. Because the application is what we're approving. And the application says that the applicant intends to provide landscaping on the westerly side of the property, particularly in the vicinity of the proposed two-story building, which would be the, in place of the existing barn, as mutually agreed between the applicant and the owner of 52 Linden Street. It would be entirely appropriate for us to make that a condition of approval, that there be mutual agreement between the applicant and the owner of 52 Linden Street as to landscaping.
I guess I'm questioning why the other, the property on the other side is not addressed in the application as well.
Because the property owner on the other side has already paid for a fence, which is on their property and which they are responsible for maintaining in order to provide adequate screening on that side. So there's a fence between 46, 46?
Yeah.
46 and 50 that is put up by the owners of 46 who testified this evening.
Yes, and expressed a concern about, even with that fence, about lights and so I still think it should be addressed in the application.
I don't know how it can be. Again, the owner of the property has a right to put up lights on their own property. Whether it's, it's not necessarily part of this application. I think where we have some leverage is to provide some, a requirement that there be adequate landscaping on 52, between 50 and 52, because that's much closer to that structure.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay. That adequate off-street parking and loading is provided, and ingress and egress is so designed as to cause minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets. Okay, so we've heard about the parking. There are four spots in the back, two in the front, and they're adding another one sort of on the side.
Again, the application specifically states six, and we are going to have to make as a condition of approval that any condition of approval that might be forthcoming would have to articulate that there will be seven, because the application only says six.
Right.
Where seven are required, and the applicant has expressed a, an ability to put in a seventh.
Right.
We've also heard, however, from an abutter that ingress and egress and parking and traffic and such has been an issue
Yes.
In the past, when there have been significant number of-
Yeah, there's a little hill there.
Residents.
That it, you know, it's hard to see
Yeah.
On that little rise, so.
Yeah.
But that's a review, that's a planning.
That is, exactly. What we can mandate is the number of parking spaces that are provided. We cannot mandate that they change the curb cuts.
Yeah. Those, I think, I think the ori, did they say the original curb cut was being maintained?
Both of them.
They are.
There's one on the side of the property.
Right, okay. And that's where the existing parking cars go in and out, so it's not really a change.
There will be two on the westerly side, and then there'll be a longer driveway on the eastern-
To four on the other side.
Yeah.
But the two on the westerly side are still backing out into the street.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. That's the way it is now, though, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Except the one on the westerly side is not paved. I think it's just grass.
It's just grass.
Grass now.
Yes.
It looks like you're just pulling.
Yeah.
Okay. That the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where located, except where may otherwise be determined for large-scale developments. I don't, let's see. So it's already now conforming regarding the setbacks. We've talked about that.
I think we're fine with that.
Yeah. Any, anyone else?
No.
Okay, as a condition of special con, okay. May be required to obtain town plan or review. So as a condition, the applicant may be required to obtain town plan or review and/or planning board approval of the site plan. And may require the applicant to obtain planning board approval of the site plan prior to rendering a decision on the application. And we did have a butter, an abutter who requested that.
Yes, and we are welcome to do that, which would be that any application is dependent upon not only approval, that any, any approval would be dependent upon site plan approval from the planning board.
Okay. Okay. Use shall not adversely affect abutting or nearby property values. We haven't heard that it does, as usually we don't hear
We usually we don't hear.
That it does. If, okay, bulk storage of the material, that doesn't, that doesn't apply.
And page 4 dot 7, you've got your conversions A through H.
Okay. All right, so on conversions, okay. The number- The number of spaces for off-street parking shall comply with Article 5.6 Off-Street Parking. I think we went through that, didn't we?
Correct. We've determined that number is seven.
Yes, the minimum lot size required shall be, okay, such that each dwelling unit is provided 30% of the minimum lot size per unit. We went through that. There was some discrepancy with the square footage. It appears that it would still meet that. I don't know if we actually, do we want to-
I believe that it was 4,500 is what's required, and even at the lower of the two numbers that were presented to us, it's, it's close, but it's still, yeah.
All right. The structure has been a residence for a minimum of 10 years.
Yes.
Yes, it has. The lot must meet a minimum of 20% of open space. I believe it does, based on the figures. Okay. Okay, for conversions intended to become rental units, one unit shall remain owner-occupied. We've heard that this is not going to be rental.
That's correct. It's been stated, it was stated in the application that this is intended to be a condominium.
Within the application, not-
Which will be sold.
Each unit will be sold, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly where it is in here.
It's somewhere in there, it's not on the-
It's page 5 of 6.
You're almost there.
Okay. Do we think that, is that?
There it is.
The proposed residential converted creates three condominium units which will be sold. Therefore, this requirement is not applicable.
Okay, so that's in there. All right. Again, may require the planning board to approve the proposed site plan. All conversions, conversions consisting of three or four units must be reviewed. So we know it will be reviewed, and we can require that.
Mm-hmm.
May allow, an, board of adjustment may allow expansion to an existing structure for the purpose of providing additional area for the units, providing all other requirements are met. Is that?
As a matter of fact, there is not-
I don't think that's-
An expansion.
Yeah. Prior to any renovations or building, the owner shall provide evidence to the town building inspector that septic facilities are adequate for both units. Okay, I think that what we've heard is that this is not going to be on a septic system.
It is gonna be on a septic system, and we can require that it be on a septic system.
I thought it's going to be on the town.
We have to require-
Oh, not septic, I apologize, I apologize, I apologize. Septic, I'm hearing septic. Looking at septic and-
And thinking town.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
So, but that can be a requirement.
Right.
My, a condition.
Right. That it is-
And it goes on to town.
Existing municipal water and sewer.
Okay.
Water's already on.
And I think that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's A to H.
So the water is on sewer, isn't it?
Thank you for leading us through that. Is there any further discussion of the either special exception or conversion criteria? Hearing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
I can try to make a motion.
Can I just, can I ask, what are, what are our options?
Options as far as, so we either make a motion to approve with the accept, with all of the conditions, right? Or we can defer until after planning? Is that, is that an option?
It would be, we can say that a, um, an approval is dependent upon not just site plan approval, site plan review, but site plan approval.
Just make it a condition that it has to be approved.
Okay.
But we can't wait for them to do that.
So we have to, okay.
Because they need this to do that.
I think that we should include that in the-
Yes.
Okay. That's one of the potential conditions, I think.
Must be on sewer.
Yep.
Seven parking spaces.
Landscaping between 50 and 52.
50 and 52, and any approval is dependent upon site plan approval from the planning board. Not from the town planner, from the planning board.
Yes, I understand the difference.
Making sure.
Oh, I do.
Okay. So we want to go ahead with a motion?
I believe we're ready to accept a motion.
Okay.
Whatever that might be. Since you're making the motion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the application of 107 Panoma Road for special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2 Schedule 1. Permitted uses in Article 5, Section 5.2 to permit the conversion of an existing single-family residence and attached one into three residential condominium units, subject to the following conditions. One, the units must be connected to existing municipal water and sewer supply.
Systems.
Systems.
Okay.
Two, adequate landscaping as mutually agreed upon by the applicant and the res, the residents, the residents at 52 Linden Street be constructed or put in place.
There be agreement, yes.
Mutually agreed.
Mutually agreed.
The applicant will add one parking space in addition to what is stated in the application for a total of seven parking spaces. And that this application is, the approval of this application is dependent upon site plan approval by the planning board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, discussion of the application, of the motion, rather.
Five.
Four.
No, you're just, no, that was number five.
What plane did you fly, you know?
Just saying.
Done.
Sorry.
Don't distract them.
Is there any further discussion of the motion? I don't know what five, that's four.
Any further discussion, do we?
Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Summers. Do we want to take a couple-minute break before we hear Application 2316? Or are we all set to keep going? Everybody all set to keep going?
I think Doug-
Doug wants to-
Did we do Kingston, did we do the Kingston Road? I, I'm sorry, I may have missed.
No, that's at the end.
The reconsideration.
The reconsiderations at the end.
Oh.
Oh, are you suggesting moving it up because of Ms. Summers?
I'm leaving. No, I'm leaving.
No.
I don't need to be here.
No, you don't need to be here, that's our discussion. She doesn't need to be here.
She's like, I don't want to be here.
Yeah. Do we keep going, or do we, um, everybody okay keeping going? Very good.
Get it done.
Let's get it done. Okay, the application of Mario A. Ponte for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.6.6, to permit less parking spaces than required for the residential and retail use is proposed for within the existing building at 85 to 87 Water Street. The subject property is located in the W.C. Waterfront Commercial Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 72-29. This is EBA Case 2316. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So, we want to renovate the Jandrew building, which is across the street. It's the building that trends is currently in, uh, it's terribly under-
Can I interrupt you for just one moment? I should have said at the outset. I just want to disclose that I rent office space from Mr., from the applicant. I don't think that that, that I need to recuse myself, but I want to disclose that.
You're not in the Jandrew block, you're in the other.
No.
Okay, fine. Thank you for saying that.
No.
Yep.
So we would like to renovate the building because it's underused and is badly in need of restoration. We'd like to add two apartments up above, renovate the ones on the second floor. There's three there now, but there'll be four. There's one existing retail, but there were two, there were three at different times. We're gonna convert it to two, and then there'll be two more apartments below the retail, which is still one floor above the back roadway. And we need parking like most of the buildings downtown need. I'm told from the engineer that my building actually owns most of that alleyway. Goes right to the wall of the Shaw's building. We thought about maybe incorporating, incorporating some of that into parking, but, you know, it might be difficult to do that. So we need additional parking spaces.
Can you tell us what, so in addition, and we're all familiar with the retail front, what's upstairs right now and what's down below right now?
Upstairs is three apartments right now.
Okay, and has been long-term, there's been apartments there?
Over 60 years.
And they're occupied?
Well, now they're leaving, because we're renovating, so we're not renewing their leases.
Okay, they have been occupied.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And below, they use it as storage. It was apartments maybe 10 years ago, but now it's mostly storage.
For trends, or?
Below, yeah, trends and the bookstore. That's below the street floor. One floor below.
One floor below, okay. So there's gonna be a net gain in the number of apartments.
Correct.
And therefore, a net gain in the requirement for parking.
Exactly.
And the, the delta between what you, what would be grandfathered in, if you would, now, and what you would be required is, one, two? Do you know the number? The specific relief that's being sought?
He doesn't have a mic.
Oh, he doesn't have a mic.
Where's the microphone?
There's a microphone here.
Oh, does one have a green light flashing, or is there just one with-
This one has a green light.
Okay.
Do you know what the net gain, you have a net gain of apartments?
About five.
How many additional apartments?
Yes, five.
There's three existing.
Yep.
Well, we'll let the applicant answer.
Five.
Five.
Okay.
And are they one-bedroom or two-bedroom units?
Two are two-bedroom, right, isn't it? And the rest are one-bedroom.
So what we're trying to get at is what is the specific relief being sought in terms of the number of parking spaces, just so we have a number in mind?
Well, I was told years ago that that building was already allocated 20 parking spaces when Tracy McGrail did the investigating for the waterfront, riverfront project. When was that, 20 years ago?
At least.
She told me, she says, your building's already allocated like 20 spaces.
Where?
Where, huh?
Where?
Out front, like the rest of them, that's what they're allocated.
Yeah, they're just-
They're not specifically-
Welcome to the zoning board. This is the fifth, 10th application we have had for relief from parking that doesn't exist. That's what we do.
We're gonna continue to perpetuate this problem.
We are.
Because the town has not said it's an issue.
Yeah.
Well, otherwise, there would be no development, new businesses or apartments.
Like, like the church up the street, they needed parking relief as well. They don't really have much, many places to park. I mean, we have a lot of spaces around the bandstand in front, the parking lot across the street.
Well, I would argue that the church, they're in there on Sundays, other day-
No, it's a church apart, it was a church converted to the condu-
Oh, that building, got it, yes, understood.
Yeah, yeah.
And the Ioka, still doing the same thing. I don't know how many apartments they're at. But it's, it's a downtown, and that's, you know, that's just the way it is.
Are there any changes to the exterior of the building being made?
Yes, but the, the changes, we're bringing it back to its original historical significance with the dormers that were across the top. Do you have a picture of it? It's already been approved twice by the HDC.
If you would be so kind as to introduce the person that you're conferring with? Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
This is, now this is building number- I probably am going down a path we didn't even need to go down. I apologize for delaying everything.
He's got the drawing, he's looking for the old picture.
Yeah.
Do you have a good idea of what it looks like, right, the building now?
Yeah.
Originally, it had these dormers, but he took them down and covered them over. You can see the evidence of that. These were originally tall windows with the granite. The granite is still there, but he closed them over with, um-
It's shingles.
Yeah.
I've often wondered, because you look at the shingles and it looks weird.
It doesn't mix, it doesn't.
But he didn't want to pay for the sized windows that it's gonna cost.
Okay.
These arches are there. You can see one, if you turn the corner, one is still exposed. These arches are there, but they're covered with that ugly canopy that's-
Correct.
We're gonna take that off and expose all of them. So that's what it's gonna look like in the future.
And you said you have already submitted this to the HDC, and it's been approved at HDC. They must have been quite happy.
They were.
Okay.
As far as parking goes, I, I think it's seven spaces, because it's two for each two-bedroom.
Are the existing apartments, is it, are they all one-bedrooms that are existing, or the two-bedroom?
I mean, one for each one bedroom.
Oh, one bedroom. So the three there now are one-bedrooms, so those-
So the, the relief being sought would be for seven additional spaces. Just so we articulate that.
Right.
They don't exist, we know that, we get that, it's downtown. Downtown is traditionally a mix of residences and retail. And nobody has enough parking.
Does that, those fictitious spaces take into, is that like on-street parking? Does it take into consideration what happens when we're in the winter parking ban and there's-
No, it's the town, it's the municipal lot. It's the town lot.
Which there's only 18 spots designated for overnight parking in there.
Just saying. We're all aware.
Well, we recently, I mean, is this similar to the renovation of the Ioka building that was just recently approved?
Yes. There's nothing I like less than kicking the can down the road. However, solving parking is not the purview of the zoning board of adjustment.
I, I, I understand that, but it is within our purview to approve or deny an application for an exception or a variance to the requirements that are in the zoning.
Correct. Anything else you'd like to add? Are there any further questions for the app?
Is there anything you want to add?
I don't have any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ponte. Did anyone open this up to the public? Would anyone like to ask a question? Gentleman in the back who's sitting there very quietly, hasn't spoken up yet, so we assume that you're not here for this one, so that's good.
Well, I wasn't, but-
I'm not trying to badger you, you're talking.
He just wants to have a fun turn tonight.
I, I realize that you are, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Barry Pastor.
Okay.
A resident up on Front Street.
Yeah.
And I realize that parking downtown is a, is a problem for everybody, whether it be businesses or, or residences. But where there's a parking ban in place during the winter, and it may not make a difference to the businesses, because people come and go, but if people are living there, they need a place to put their car overnight. And I, I just don't understand how this goes on. The, the, the church completely baffles me. I can't imagine anybody living in that church and wanting to walk all the way across town to leave their car overnight. It's ridiculous. This is somewhat of an extension of the same thing.
Mr. Pastor, I fully understand your perspective. And then, it is not the business of this board to question-
I realize that.
The business plan of anyone who comes before us.
Right.
And I, I share your skepticism that somebody would want to buy a condominium unit.
Wouldn't be me.
That would come, that does not come with onsite parking, but this is a slightly different situation.
Yeah, okay.
I do appreciate your comments. I'm sorry if I badged you and-
No, no problem. You just brought me out of my shell.
That's right. That's right. Unless you'd like to add anything else, I will close this to public session, we'll move into deliberation. Okay. Well, I share your concern. These are fictitious in some, to some extent, parking spaces that we're dealing with because we have approved, however, the Ioka used to get a couple hundred people in there, and I don't know where they park for a show. I share your concern. We have, however, before us, an application that will dramatically improve the appearance of an historic and important building in downtown Exeter that does require the income that would come from having additional apartments. Whether people are willing to move into such an apartment without the guarantee of a parking spot is entirely possible. Clearly, almost every building downtown has more residents than there are parking spots, especially during the winter when it's closed. I also would be concerned about singling, at what point do you draw the line and say, "This building can have them, and this one can't"? And I would be concerned about drawing a line. And that's, I'm gonna leave it right there. I don't believe that this board can draw such a line. I've made speeches before into this very same microphone about the need for the town to address the shortage of parking that exists, but again, it is not the, it's beyond the scope of the zoning board of adjustment to address that. Except, we can continue to express our desire that the town do something about what is perceived and what is often considered to be by downtown merchants with whom unfriendly, a shortage of parking spaces. So, that said, is there any further discussion? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll shoot for a motion.
Go for it, please.
I move to approve the application of Mario A. Ponte for variance of Article 5, Section 5.6.6, to permit less parking spaces than required for the residential and retail uses proposed for within the existing building at 85 through 87 Water Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for what you're doing to the building. So, we have before us a request for a rehearing from a case that we heard last month, which is the application for a, mine was an auto repair facility at, I'm looking desperately, 165A Kingston Road. I was looking for the address and couldn't find it. And I wasn't gonna say anything lest I be accused of having error number five.
Six or seven.
No, 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 it would only be five, I'm up to four, aren't I?
No, you're, you hit five.
You think I hit five? Yeah. Stop there, yeah. Jeez, I'm gonna consider single digits a win, isn't I? So, the, this is strictly a discussion amongst the board, there's no public input. Ms. Summers submitted the application, the, the request, but she doesn't get, even have to stick around. This is strictly for discussion. Generally, the criteria for rehearing is that, A, there is new evidence that was not available at the time of the original application, which is not the case, or that there be an error, or we determined that there was an error. The applicant believes that an error was made. I would point out that our decision was not only unanimously negative to deny the application, but I believe we articulated, was it four separate criteria that we did not feel that the application met? Was it four?
Three or four.
It was several. I don't know what, and...
Again, I got one. Four, one, two, three, or five? And the motion to deny passed five, zero. Is there any discussion?
I didn't, I wasn't at that.
I wasn't either.
I did read the minutes, and I don't see any error. I don't see any error, and I thought that the concerns raised by the butters who had appeared had been expressed, I don't know if they were present or if it was letters, I think they were present.
Present.
Were very carefully considered by the board, and I think the board came to a reasoned decision. Based on what I have read, I did go out to look at the site, and there are, it is right in the middle of residences. So, I understand the concerns.
Do we need to address each of the arguments that they...
No, we do not, we simply need to make a decision whether we wish to rehear the case or not. A motion to deny would mean that it does not come back to this board. A motion to approve would mean that they start all over with a new application, which we would then rehear here. If we deny it, then they're done with the zoning board, and they're only, their next option would be...
Superior Court.
Superior Court. Which, given that our approval was unanimous, I, I doubt that there would stand much of a chance, but you never can tell.
Well, does, does someone who was here have an opinion about this? Were you, did you, I don't know if you were here, Bob? Did you vote on that application?
Teresa, Laura, Martha, you and I, and Laura were, are the three carryovers.
Yep, sorry.
It was a long discussion, it was quite a bit of public testimony, there was quite a bit of back and forth, but I consider that, as Ms. Petito said, that I think we did a good job in making it, in rendering a decision and in taking into consideration the, both the applicant as well as the, as the butters, as well as the interests of the town.
Yep.
In terms of access to the road and signage and all sorts of different things that would be required in order to put a, a commercial business on that site.
Yeah. I agree, I think we were very thoughtful and methodical in going through the criteria and articulating what we, how we felt about the, them not meeting those criteria.
Would you like to make a motion?
No.
Jet lag's not an excuse, like, he's still sitting here.
He, he doesn't have to talk. I don't feel like I should make a motion saying that I wasn't here.
Well, I, I wasn't here either.
I'll, I'll do it. I move that we deny the request to rehear the variance application for the property at 165A Kingston Road.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny the request for rehearing, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Request is denied, five, zero. Last item of business is the approval of minutes of the August 15th meeting. And again, it would be Martha, and Laura, and myself, who would be, Martha or Laura, or Laura, do either of you have any comments on the, on the minutes?
I will be honest, I have not had a time to read them.
I have scanned them, and I found absolutely nothing, as I usually do on Joanna Bartel's minutes.
They're all saved by me.
There we go, I trust you.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the minutes of the August 15th meeting as submitted?
I move to approve the minutes from the August 15th meeting as submitted.
Martha, will you second that motion?
Oh, yes, I'll second.
Moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are good.
Awesome.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. We're good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.